Presenting a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Made by Coleman, proper section by Teal. All in favor of said motion, let them say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, and it is unanimous. I don't think there's any public comment tonight, but this time we'll stand for a moment of silence and say our pledge of allegiance. Let's say our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I will take a few moments to welcome our visitors, welcome our administration, our staff. Good to see a lot of you out with us tonight to our board meeting. We certainly appreciate your attendance in the meeting tonight. Board members, you've been given the minutes from the last meeting, so at this time we entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Dusa, proper sectioned. Coleman, any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let them say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, and it is unanimous. All right, at this time we'll turn our meeting over to our chief financial officer, Mr. Brad Willard, for our June and July monthly review. I think he's gonna be on Zoom tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Hope you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we hear you good.
All right, sorry I can't be with you in person, pretty under the weather today, but I did want to bring to you or be available as I present the June and July monthly reviews, in case you had any questions or comments to note. Would make you aware, especially the June information, and some of the July information will change as we continue to close out the 2021 year, excuse me, the 21-22 year in preparation for the audit. So just be aware of that, and I'm available if you have any questions or comments related to those.
Any questions? Okay, here none. Thank you, Mr. Willard. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time we'll turn it over to Dr. Hazer, our director of personnel, for our personnel exhibit.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, at this time I would like to recommend the following exhibits for your approval, exhibits A through E.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Teal, proper sectioned by Dusa, any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let them say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time I'll call Ms. Stubbs for our curriculum report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, and members of the board. I'd like to highlight some items from the June and July curriculum report. The first is the end of the year school data review meetings, that these were held in July with the curriculum team, along with Dr. Anderson and each of our principals. You will note that there are some common accomplishments among our schools, and these are students above grade level, on grade level, and below grade level making growth in reading and math. There are some areas of improvement that we'll be focusing on this upcoming school year, and some of those are additional growth needed for students below grade level in both reading and math. Some of our, and of course percentages need to be increased, and those are also noted. And there are different levels of support depending on the needs of the schools, and those are in the chart for you to look at. The other thing that I would like to highlight is our summer programs. So we had summer programs from 4K all the way up to 12th grade with different models. Elementary had a full day program, 4K all the way to fifth grade, a middle school half day, and those students were working on math and reading and computer skills. We saw significant gains from our students. You will see that in the report. We had over 400 elementary students, and almost 67% of those students made significant gains in math. Some of those students grew as much as 10 points, even up to 30 points. At the end of camp, parents were given surveys, and overwhelmingly positive comments from parents. Many parents noted that their children benefited greatly from the program. They wanted their child to be involved in it next year. They said it was a great experience. We did have some suggestions from parents that we will use to guide us next year with our next year's camp. On the third page, there is a section on our classroom observation instrument. Over the summer, principals, along with our district administrators, met together to collaborate and develop one tool that would be used in classroom observations. And this is all the way from 4K to 12th. So even though engagement, for example, will look different in a 5K classroom and an eighth grade classroom, those are the kinds of things that will be on that instrument. And those will be the look fours, and teachers will be aware of this instrument, and everyone will be using it during the school year. There is also some information about the new employee program. This year we have approximately 56 new certified employees, and 32 of those will participate in the induction program this year. And each of those induction folks will be assigned a two-member team. And so that will be part of that mentoring process for those individuals. And then below you can see the sessions that will be offered to support these new teachers throughout the school year. Are there any questions?
Any question?
I'm, one question. I'm assuming that later on we will get a kind of an outline how each school did on the MAP test, the South Carolina Ready Test, that'll be coming to us later on.
Yes, yes, we had those during our end of the year data reviews, and so we can certainly, you know, send those to you as well.
And.
When it's not embargoed from the state, we'll be glad to provide those. Also, our South Carolina report cards, school report cards will be out. Coming up soon, and you'll be able to see that as well. Yes, or we can't provide it to the board until the embargo is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, at this time I'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson, our interim superintendent.
All right. So we have obviously school opening on August 15th, very excited about that. Before I even begin to talk about it, I would like to just publicly commend all of our district staff, district administrators, all of our custodians, food service, assistant principals, principals, everyone who worked during the summer behind the scenes. To work on the logistical things, the moves, the planning, so our students can be ready, and our schools can be ready when our students return on August 15th. So I really want to commend them. They've done a great job over the summer, and we're gonna have a great start as a result of it. Also, in regards to our, in regards to our upcoming event, opening day, that's actually this Thursday. This Thursday, we will have an opening day at Chesterfield Ruby Middle School. We have vendors, we will celebrate achievements from last year. We certainly will hear from our district teacher of the year, Ms. Byrd, and we'll also announce our district employee of the year, and have some prizes as well for all of our, for some of our employees. So it's gonna be a good time for us to come together as a district in relation to our employees and the community, okay? One thing I do want to back up and mention is that when we open up school on August 15th to all of our students, we do have safety measures that we have gonna be putting in place and have started putting in place. All of our middle and high schools will be utilizing their metal detectors on a daily basis. All of our employees will be wearing their staff IDs, have mine on right here, right below my tie. Exterior doors, we expect to remain locked throughout the day. Each school will have an active school emergency response team, which comprises of the principal as well as staff members, plus the SRO. And we also compile a district safety team. We established that over the summer, and we will meet quarterly throughout the year with local, our local medical agencies, law enforcement agencies, to go over different practices, what's working, what's not working with our schools, okay? Obviously, the first few weeks of school are gonna be very, very busy, so to all of our parents, we're gonna obviously need their cooperation and patience. There's gonna be some long, in the mornings as well as the afternoon, there's gonna be some long car lines, there's gonna be some late buses. That's all a part of it, but as we progress into the school year, things, you know, kind of level out, and then we can, we'll be able to push forward, okay? But our expectation is to have all of our students in school, August 15th, where we're, and we'll be ready, students will be ready to go, first year school, in those classrooms, okay?
Okay.
Last but not least, I do have an advisement with the administrative rule AR, DKR, expense authorization reimbursement. That's actually the per diem, the states' per diem rates have actually increased, meaning travel, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we're simply, we simply want to adjust hours to be aligned with the states as well, so that should be in your packets.
Ms. Swinney?
Questioning.
Yes, sir.
In terms of using your metal detectors, every student that's walking in that school now would go through the metal detector, either go through a wand or whatever they call that.
I'm glad you mentioned that. So yes, again, the metal detectors will be used every day, and they will be in random locations, but they will be utilized every day. And yes, every student will go through, middle and high school student will go through the metal detector or have the wand.
Okay.
The wand will be utilized.
All right, good.
Okay.
Bus drivers, I know you said that some might be a little bit late. I'm assuming that you're talking about that our bus drivers, do we have sufficient bus drivers to, are we short on bus drivers?
We've been short on bus drivers.
I mean, I know we are, but we can manage and.
Yes.
And things will be well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go take some time, but we'll, we'll get there.
Okay.
I make a motion that we amend the travel reimbursement to get in line with the rest of the state.
Second.
What is that? Yeah, I know, but I want to know what's the figures, right?
Just send you.
It's in the stack.
It's in the stack.
All right, okay, I missed that then.
Yeah.
I'm third on.
No, first like, just breakfast went from.
Okay.
Okay, the motion has been made. Any discussion? I apologize, we have a sidebar too, y'all are too, in discussion. Okay, all in favor of the said motion, let them say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign, and it's unanimous. Okay, board members, we'll remind you, August 27th and 28th is the SC-SBA School Law Conference in Greenville. Naturally, you should have already signed up for it, and I think those arrangements have been taken care of, I'm sure. Thank you. Also, we'll remind you that September 12th will be our board meeting at Central High School at 5:30, with executive session starting at 5:00 PM. Also on our agenda tonight is to talk about the dual enrollment, and I will preface it by saying I do not work for Northeastern Technical College, so we've been waiting to be able to even talk about it after our employment from there. So we want to discuss dual enrollment for Chesterfield County as far as the funding model. As most of you know, we discussed it during budget time, that the legislation did not include funding for dual enrollment for this next year. Don't know if you've received as many phone calls as I have, maybe, maybe not, but a lot of concerned parents with how will it be funded? Just so you know, to give you a little background, each county, and it's not just NETC, it can be USCL or wherever else the students take dual enrollment. But just so you know, each county does something different. Marlboro County, for instance, has the Love Foundation, which is the Love family that actually donates several hundred thousand dollars a year to dual enrollment just for Marlboro County students. Dillon, the actual county council gives mileage towards dual enrollment, and then you get to Chesterfield, and we were using the state funding that the legislators had given us over the past, we were using it to fund our dual enrollment. But with that being out, there is no budget item for dual enrollment. So I kind of wanted to open up the discussion tonight on what we're gonna do as a board for our students for dual enrollment. It is kind of imperative that we talk on it tonight because their classes start as well. I know enrollment is rather low in dual enrollment at the moment. A lot of it is due to students not knowing how it's gonna be funded. So I just want to put that out there and let you guys have a discussion.
What's the cost per student?
It's $177 a hour for a course with NETC. After fees, course fees, everything, it ends up being about $200 a credit hour. Then the students are given South Carolina lottery, and some apply and are able to get South Carolina wins. Normally leaves a balance of approximately 400 and some change per student is the balance that's gonna be left this year for students to sign up.
I think we need to look into making sure that we fund it somehow or another, and we need to look into making sure that that's still available for all our students.
Ms. Birch?
If we help them out now, do you think the enrollment, do they still have time to sign up for the semester?
You have a September start and an October start, so yeah.
So they would, yeah.
Well, one question I have, I guess, is options available? I know you mentioned what the other counties were doing. I'm just thinking Chesterfield County, other than what we can come up with as a district here, what are some of the options unless we have a person that can be a funder? What's allowed, options that are available?
Those are in those fire county, I don't know.
What's the total, what are we looking at total wise?
Uh.
Hundred and a half?
Yeah, 150.
I think we need to look at, see if we can, see if we can. That's just a question. We don't need, we don't need to lose that.
No.
This is a question, this is the district portion. Now, they've taken this course at Northeastern Tech. What do they share? Do they pay anything towards dual enrollment?
The student?
No, the Northeastern school itself.
No, they capture the lottery and wins for the students, and I did hear that the governor has put out some more money. The details haven't been released on it, but there is some more funding. I did have a conversation with Dr. Wagner on Saturday, and there is some funding coming, but he wasn't able to discuss it. So he does not think that each student would have a $400 bill at this point for two courses.
So.
But there will be some.
Okay, your request is that we need $150,000 to continue the program, and my understanding is that USC Lancaster is enrolling these students, and they don't have to pay but a very minimum cost at the most because they are taking care of that pay. I guess my question is, should we have some kind of. I guess my question is, should we have some kind of agreement with Northeastern where they are putting in some money too? And I have no problem. I don't want to see the program collapse. I put in the $150,000, but we need to work on something on how we're going to address this in the near future. And that has been the issue because they can go to USC and they get USCL, as they call it.
Right.
But you can go to USCL and basically take the course free, whereas we have this institution right here in the county, and we run into some financial issues.
My understanding, and I don't, this is hearsay, but that USCL cannot handle the influx of all students.
Yeah. I can imagine. Yeah. If you're talking about.
I'm agreeing with Mr. Duce. I think it's a wonderful program that somehow we need to figure out how to sustain. The other issue is if we approve the funding for this cycle or this quarter or semester, what, are we going to be able to sustain that? And if we're not going to be able to sustain it, then what other options are out there to help us sustain it? Because I know, I know our budget right now, at least with what Brad has presented to us, I don't know how long we can sustain that amount.
I do know, I doubt we're going to fill the 29 vacancies. So I have looked over the budget with Dr. Anderson. That's what, 1.5 million? We do hope to hire some of those, but there, so there is going to be some savings in this budget year, no doubt.
Okay.
Correct?
So our, yes, our, so our next board meeting is September 12th. Mr. Coleman mentioned.
It's too late.
Is that too late?
That's too late.
No. Okay.
It may be too late for the funding. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, I'll jump in. This is Brad. Just to share some information, a couple of thoughts.
Yes, sir.
I was aware that the governor had at least initiated discussions about some additional funding that I think, or at least the way I interpreted it, that would go directly to the technical system, would not be funding for the districts. I'm not sure if that is going to happen, not sure in what way that that would be done. And it's something that we really aren't at the table on. So that's one thing. Number two, I would agree that as you go through the 2223 budget, I think it's best for Chesterfield County to continue operation of dual credit, dual enrollment as it has done in the past, albeit the state funding add-on has been taken away. That was taken away very late, and it wasn't something we could prepare for. So my thought is no one gets penalized for that. We continue, and the district looks for ways over the next year to make sure that we have funding in place to do that. And I think that is a very realistic goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard.
I am in support of it. I just want us to look at some avenues, and if necessary, I'm going to change. I wouldn't make the motion that.
Okay.
The district, go ahead and do what is necessary to make sure that our students have the dual enrollment.
Okay.
Program continue.
Okay. So the motion's on the floor by Sweeney.
I second.
Motion's been seconded by Duce. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And we appreciate that.
I do, I do think we definitely need to look going forward, starting now, for some of the funding models going forward. I mean, yes.
Yeah. Sounds good. All right. Board members, you were given information concerning the Ruby, the town of Ruby's requests for the property across the street from Ruby Elementary School. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Chesterfield County School District honored the request by the town of Ruby to give them that property across the school for recreational use.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made by Sweeney, properly executed by Teal. Any discussion?
Just make sure that they understand that all legal fees and all of that is their responsibility.
Yeah. We'll take care of that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Give us at least five dollars.
Five dollars. Five dollars in legal fees. Yes, sir. All in favor of the said motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Coleman, properly seconded by Birch. All in favor of the said motion, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it's done. We appreciate your attendance tonight. I think we got to take a picture before we leave, guys, so. Thank you for your attendance.